Rose?
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, October 18th, 2017 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Potowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, I would that we remember all of those in our community that are less fortunate than we are locally as well as globally. Also ask that we remember all of those who have lost loved ones in our community since the last time we were in these chambers. And finally, as always, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the best information so that we can make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, native physical with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes for the city council meeting of October 4th and bills for payment on October 13th and 20th, 2017. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski.
Okay, at this time, we have a special presentation by Councilman Brennan.
Dave and Lisa, do you want to come up also? The proud parents. I'm here to give an honor to William Pianta. William is a member of Boy Scouts Group 59 in Erie, and here are his parents, Dave and Lisa Pianta. William graduated from Cathedral Prep and currently majors in Computer Science at Penn St. Barron. He received the Eagle Scout rank on June 27th this year, and we're here today to recognize him for his achievement. So I want to give this certificate. It simply says, I'm going to open it up for a second here, Erie City Council gives certificate recognition and hereby presented to William Pianta for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, Boy Scout Troop 59. Also, I want to mention a few other things about William. He earned two, or I'm sorry, 22 merit badges and also served his scout group in a variety of leadership roles. He completed a major project recently, building a walkway surrounding a troop-created totem pole as well as a flagpole located outside his church's youth house. William organized a project, gathered materials, enlisted help, and then constructed the walkway. So William, again, congratulations, and we wish you well as you continue your education at Penn St. Barron.
Do we have any citizens here for repository sales? Do we have any citizens here for repository sales? One last time, are there any citizens here for repository sales? Hearing none? Rose?
Be citizens to be heard.
We don't have any?
We don't have anybody signed up.
Okay, please step up to the microphone, give your name and address.
Hi, my name's Art Leopold, 5341, Apple Grove Lane, Erie, 16506. Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. Martin Luther King. I rise again today regarding the decriminalization of marijuana. Wanted to give a council update as to what's going on since last I talked with you. Last week in Redding, PA, they joined a decriminalization effort, and now they're another city in Pennsylvania where the decriminalization of marijuana has been achieved. We now have Philadelphia, Pittsburgh State College, Harrisburg, York, and Redding, PA. It was just learned that Ontario, Canada, has now legalized marijuana, legalized 19-year-olds and older. Now, again, decriminalization is not legalization, it's just reducing the penalty of the arrest so that those that are arrested no longer suffer from not being able to get rent, not being able to get housing, they have a criminal record. They just learned that they can't apply to be in the service if they have a record. I never thought of that, but if we can do this, it allows many more people, many more of our young people, to begin to live productive lives and not be hampered when they're right in an area, in a possibility where they can take off with their lives and their careers, et cetera. I wanted to let you know that we've organized a public meeting to be held at the Jefferson Education Society up on State Street. The theme is casual marijuana use, a crime or civil infraction. Fewer arrests equal less incarceration. And I wanted, I printed out a special invitation for all of you, so I wanted to give that to you this evening. I also have another support letter that has come in from another organization, so if you'd be so kind, thank you very much. This week also, there's been a major report done on marijuana use and arrests in Pennsylvania, and I've sent this to you all in your inboxes, and if you check your inboxes attached to city council, you should have that report. It's a 15-page report, looks like this, and it's on the statistics regarding marijuana arrests. There are 49 individuals every day that are arrested just for low-level use of marijuana in Pennsylvania. In Pennsylvania, they have found that in the last five years, the rate of incarceration and arrest for low-level marijuana paraphernalia use is eight times more likely for the black minority community, eight times. So what are we doing? Where is this focused? Why are we doing this? So now I rise to recommend that you come to our public meeting. We're going to have Representative Ed Gany, who's going to come up from Pittsburgh. He not only led a charge in Allegheny County to get decriminalization down there, but now he has a statewide effort and a bill before the State House and soon to be the Senate to decriminalize marijuana. So he's going to come up and lend his voice. We have Dr. Schoenberger from Penn State that's coming in. We have the Reverend Dale Snyder from St. James AME that's going to speak and stand to the cause. We have a medical doctor, Dr. Bolson, that's going to speak on medical issues, and we're having a public forum, so folks can come in and ask questions and hear what's going on. And so we're hoping that through more education, more knowledge, there will be more public advice for council that we move on this. And I do appreciate your efforts in this regard. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Roseanne Barker, and I live at 181 Hall Drive. I have come tonight to ask our members of city council to consider waiving your rules and passing a resolution opposing right to work. The reason that we're coming to you is we're coming to communities all across our state because there is a movement afloat to make Pennsylvania right to work. The more cities and the more community members who sign on in opposition of it, the less likely that that will pass. I have seen that each of you have an actual copy of it, and I sincerely believe that you all realize the value of unions and are vital part of this community and will be in support of it. And I thank you for your time, but now I have a message for these people here in this room. I see too often, when I come here to the city council meeting, that we walk up here and we tell them our comments, but so many of you here don't stay for the entire meeting to hear their response to your comment, so I would encourage you to stick around for the entire meeting, and thank you.
My name is Michael Wardell. I stay at 2314 Sasserfrass. I would just like to say, first of all, the kingdom of God is at hand, all right? We need to repent and be, and look forward to the kingdom of God and my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. By saying that, I've been watching the news lately, and I've been disturbed about a few things that's been happening in Erie. First of all, we need to have compassion, even on the poor who's in the park socializing. I know that you folks are being, or someone's talking about a resolution about drinking or something over there, but as I was watching the chief on TV, he said he need another tool in his toolbox. Well, we already got a ordinance, a drinking law. If somebody's out drinking in the public, and they're drunk and intoxicated, they can be arrested. We don't need someone taking people's rights away when alcohol is legal. And I think it's more than that. I think the city is making improvements, and they're doing well in making improvements downtown and everything, but I think it's more than that. I think the chief and the business people downtown don't want to see the poor gather up down there. They've been gathering up there down there for years, and the park is a, is a social place where people meet at. That's what the park is for. I mean, as long as alcohol is legal, alcohol is legal, you know? Saying that, I don't, I don't agree with the chief, and I think, I don't agree with a lot of things the chief say right now. Lawrence Park has a transparent transparency with having camera, body cameras, and the chief disagree with that, his officers having police cameras. But he agreed to have cameras downtown, but he won't, he don't want his officers to have police cameras whenever there is an incident in the city or somewhere. Why not? Why not be transparent? If Lawrence Park can afford cameras for their officers, why can't the city afford cameras for their department? Some other things, we was talking about, I heard that, that you want to do something with the 14th Street to 16th Street on Parade. I don't see nothing wrong with that. I see the problem is, why 14th Street? Why change anything there? It's been fine for so many years, and it hasn't been no accident there. There's more accidents on 12th Street than over on 14th Street. What else I had to say? Oh, yeah, about the building something down on the lake, the Hotel Mr. Scott. I guess he wants to build something down on the, on the lake there, a hotel, and if he's talking about right past you get down on the dock, he build a camp, a hotel right by the museum down there, it'd be blocking the whole view of the lake. So I think you should move it around the corner down there on foot of Holland somewhere. We always, it would be a good picture to see a big building right next to the museum right there. I think that'd be a bad smart coming down off the lake if you couldn't see the lake. That's another thing I had to say. Oh, yeah, I would really, I really like how the city finally started cleaning underneath the bridges over here on Sasserfrass Street and on Sasserfrass and on Peach Street. I was going underneath the bridge one day, and it's, like, I hate really walking underneath that bridge. It'd be so much pigeon mess down there, so it was nice seeing the city go there, and the young kids, the city workers, they was cleaning up down there, and they did a pretty good job. And I was finally, finally it good to see something like that getting done. I was wondering why the city don't even try to put some kind of cages up underneath the bridge so them birds can't really get under there. I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Terry Carson. I reside at 1054 West Fourth Street, Erie PBA 16507. Currently employed as an IT analyst at Erie Insurance Group, and I just got appointed Chair of the Community and Civic Engagement Committee within Young Erie Professionals. I came here today, this is my first city council meeting, so I came here today to get a feel for how things are ran and to understand how all this, this big beast operates, but I, I really came today because I really want to create a working relationship with the city council in regards to the organization that just became appointed chair to. You know, there's a myriad of issues facing our young people today, from violence to, you know, to unemployment, and the Young Erie Professionals are striving to become that voice, to be able to have tangible impact on decisions that are made in our city. So you will be seeing and hearing a lot from me over the next few months as I take on my duties in 2018, and I look forward to cultivating working relationships with all of you. Thank you.
My name is Veronica Rexford. I live at 4124 Westridge Road. I just want to commend you. I really appreciated seeing a young person honored for community service this evening. And I have a couple of questions regarding the proposed ordinance regarding public drinking. I feel like the city either condones public drinking or they don't. Unevenly applying an ordinance that disproportionately affects people who primarily make individuals during the daytime feel perhaps uncomfortable with a non-criminal restrictive ordinance is not a reason to unevenly apply such a restriction, in my view. I've seen a tremendous amount of borderline illegal and bad behavior during block parties, at Eight Great Tuesdays, and other city-sponsored events than I've ever seen or witnessed while passing through Perry Square. While I don't currently work downtown, I have spent considerable amount of time in that area, and I've not observed behavior that, other than making people uncomfortable, I would not feel should be termed illegal. You can incarcerate people or give them tickets, but if you're not going to apply a restrictive ordinance like that evenly, it begs the question of whose rights are more important. And I would just ask you to consider those things as you go into the first reading this evening. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? That's you.
Good evening, council. My name is McDonald. My property is 19th and Reed. I was talking to you before about those cars on 17th Street, the end of 17th Street, on the sidewalk. I see they still over there. I got a lot for my vehicles. They're not on the sidewalk, and I'm, I catch hell about that. Every once in a while, code enforcement come around, but they don't seem to go down there on 17th Street. I don't have nothing on the sidewalk. I don't understand that. I told you about that long, I don't know, it must have been about four or five weeks ago, I don't know, somewhere around there. You can't say you don't know about it because I didn't told you about it. What I want to know is what you intend on doing about it. You arrest me, and I don't have nothing on the sidewalk. I'd like to see you do something about it. Do you intend on doing anything about it? There's a, I have a friend, Hardy Payne. He used to have a lot down there on the end of Wayne Street. These foreigners come in and they can park, they could start a lot anywhere. I don't understand that, and he, he can't get nothing going. He can't get nothing going. Of course, this is not a black man's town. This is most, one of the most prejudiced towns that I've been in, and I've been in quite a few. If God came yesterday, he couldn't come fast enough for me, and I'm not ready for him. And ain't nothing funny about it. I'm as serious as a heart attack, take it any way you want it. I don't know, I don't know what's going on. You're supposed to be our leaders, but I don't like the way you're leading us. I don't like the way you're leading us. You ain't did nothing since you been up there. I don't know nothing you did for the taxpayers, and we have a lot of tax to pay. Even that dump I got in the gaddles over there, I have to pay a lot of taxes, but I'm not getting nothing for my money. I'm not getting anything for my money. Our kids coming along now, they gonna catch hell. They just don't know. They just don't know. I feel sorry for them. I really do, because things shouldn't be the way they are. This is a racist town. Black men catch hell on you. Least thing they do, you want to put him in jail. You got your cops going around running people's, black folks' tag. They don't, they don't be doing nothing and you running their tag. That don't make sense. Does that make sense to you? Don't make nothing to me. You're inciting people. Don't make sense. Shouldn't do that. When they do something, then run their tag. Don't, don't arrest people. Don't do that. Don't do that. We the last hired and the first fired. That don't make sense. And then, we're overqualified. What the hell did that come from? We're overqualified. You go on a job, you're overqualified. I, I don't know. With that, with that president we got now, a whole lot of you better wake up, because I think we're headed for a war. That's a bad thing to think about, because too many nukes. He talking about nukes. He listen to the news, but he don't do no wrong. He don't do no wrong. Both sides was, did wrong. What, when, when some, when them, I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard?
I'll make it quick. My name is Kedar Mohammed. Address, 317 East 25th. I just got a quick question. This is also my first city council meeting. I just wanted to see how things was ran, how things go about. And just one quick question that I had on my mind that I feel like I could, I feel like I should address since I was here. I've noticed that there's a, I want to say two or three main sources of, of income or three main industries that the city is into. Number one being health, so as far as like hospitals, things like that. Number one is seems to be insurance, especially with Erie Insurance taking over, and then the last one seems to be crime or the criminal system. All right? I'm only 27 years old. I'm a college graduate. There's also a lot of recent college graduates here in the city that's from the city, and a lot of us are contemplating, you know, leaving the city because there's not that many things to do besides those three atmospheres or those three particular industries. So my question was for the city council was basically, what are some, some outlets besides tourism, because I see that's one of the main things that they're focusing on as well? Besides tourism, what are some other industries or different ways that the city is looking to produce and to create revenue for the citizens of, the city of Erie, particularly the younger generation or the millennials, as everybody else would call them? Because a lot of them are either contemplating leaving or they're not living up to their potential. And so that's one of my main questions is, what are we doing to try to produce some type of revenue as far as like in the city on a local standpoint? Thank you.
Thank you.
John Lilly, I was doing some paperwork for an appeal that I had.
Give your name, please, and address.
Oh, my name is John Lilly. I live at the homeless shelter at 140 something, East 12th. It's called the St. Patrick's Haven. I was, I was appealing one of my cases, and I would go to the courthouse. I don't know if you deal with courthouse stuff with the, with the city council meetings, but, or if this is just a budget issue. But either way, the clerk of courts is supposed to mail the judge something when, when the appeal for the DA is done, and they, they're not doing their job. I go there every day and ask them about it. They act like they don't know what I'm talking about. The judge says they can't do anything yet until they get that from the clerk of courts, so I try to get them to do what they're supposed to be doing. Like, the, the decision for the DA ran out about, like, a week or two ago or something like that, and clerk of courts just acting like they don't know what the heck to do. And I can't seem to get an answer. The judge can't do anything until they mail them a piece of paper that they, they don't know about somehow. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? One last time. Before we do that, we have some students in the audience. Do we have a spokesman for them?
Hey!
Come on up. Introduce yourself to us. I noticed fear in the eyes of one of your compatriots there. He didn't want to come up.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm a little short.
That's okay.
Hello. I'm actually pretty loud by myself. Okay, hi, we're a group of students from Penn State Barron. We are here for one of our state and local political science classes. Basically, our assignment is to go to any type of local government, whether that be the Erie City Council meeting or like the school board meeting for Harbor Creek or Lawrenceville or really anywhere, pretty much to just get a feel of how the local government is ran. We like to get, we're supposed to get a feel of like the participation from the audience as far as, you know, concerns, what they want to see, members. And it's, that would be 10 to 12 pages, so you guys are giving us a lot to write up. So, yeah, thank you so much for having us, and, yeah.
Feel free to add your opinions when you want, then. Maybe we'll get a chair for you up here.
No, you can.
I would gladly give you my seat right now. Any other students here?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just in relation to the young man that was just inquiring about opportunities and things for, for youth and the millennial, I used to be one of those, I guess, right? I'm on the other side of that spectrum, but ironically, the young man here is from the Young Erie Professionals, and that might be an interesting collaboration and conversation for the two of you to have. be an interesting collaboration and conversation for the two of you to have, excuse me, on things that you're going to be looking to implement through your organization in the coming year, what you're looking to bring from an Erie young man, from Erie. Maybe that's a good conversation to have, that maybe just we were the venue for you two to meet, and maybe it's not, you know, outside of our bounds of doing something in particular. And so, I just want to say that might be a good collaboration before either of you leave, to, to meet and exchange information and anything I can do to help, and I'm sure any of us could do to help foster something. We'd definitely be interested in doing that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. As we move on to the business portion meeting, to the students, we're going to be voting on ordinances. It takes two readings of an ordinance before it becomes law. Now, today, we'll only be voting on the first reading of three of them, so, just to keep you informed, what's happening? Rose?
Ordinances for first reading. Council file 15604, an ordinance amending the City of Erie Streets Utilities and Public Services Code, Article 955 Parks and Playground Areas, Section 95507 Behavior. By adding subsection 95507J, consumption of alcoholic beverages is prohibited, to prohibit the consumption of alcoholic beverages and possession of open containers of alcoholic beverages in city parks and playgrounds to provide for definitions and to provide for exceptions, and by amending section 95599 penalty to increase the fine provision.
Yes, Mr. Mursky.
I just had a few comments and a couple of questions for the solicitor. Mr. Carley, so in voting on this, I know, obviously, we have to do a second reading. This would also affect the play, the park, the picnic pavilions at Glenwood Park as well?
What?
Okay. Would it be possible between now and the next meeting, and I'll, I'll get in touch with you, about somehow issuing permits for, just like we're going to have permits for downtown for the rib cook-off and whatever, if, for citizens to get a permit for those? Would that be possible?
Yeah, the administration is working on regulations in that regard, because Glenwood is the only picnic ground here.
Right.
And I understand that people do bring alcohol to those events, the picnics and so forth. So if that's your concern, certainly we'll communicate on that.
Thank you.
Give you a little bit more feedback on that.
And we do have another reading of this, so we do have time to work on it. Yeah, the other thing that I, I just wanted to make a comment about was, in looking at this, you know, we are one of the few cities in the United States that has no open, that has no law concerning open containers. And so, this would be the first limitation for us in the city of Erie. Many other cities, in fact, I think that we're the only city in Pennsylvania that doesn't limit open containers at, at any level. And so, in looking at the comprehensive plan and attracting people to the city, quality of life issues, one of the things that, you know, we do need to look at is, we have a Fortune 500 company right next to Perry Square. Our downtown partnership has been in support of this ordinance. And beyond that, we have children in our parks. And, you know, children and alcohol, they mix sometimes, but, but I don't think parks are the, the appropriate place for drinking. And so, if we can put in some provisions there for Glenwood Park to, to have a permitting or, or some type of, type of licensing to allow for that, then I wouldn't have a problem with this. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
It's amazing, you know, my, my parents always used to say, if you hang around long enough, you live long enough, things come back around. And this is the second time in my tenure that this has been a conversation dealing with open container and alcohol in public parks and in public venues, i.e. parks. I kind of struggle with this. There was a citizen who mentioned and spoke earlier this evening, you know, this is kind of a interesting way of applying the rule. I don't, I get the point, I think, is we deal, is the issue is maybe not alcohol, it's maybe vagrancy. And alcohol often can make that a worse situation, just because of what alcohol can do to a person who's maybe abusing it. So I get that point, but I also struggle because there's so many times, whether it's, and we'll stay right here in, you know, downtown, when we have venues where, whether it's the block party, or whether it's some fundraiser for nonprofits, the like, the golf, what's that golf thing fundraiser they do from bar to bar? You know what I mean? We do a lot of that kind of stuff downtown, and that's okay. You know, to celebrate Erie, there's a lot of alcohol in order to celebrate Erie, and just because it's permitted doesn't mean it's less alcohol in the drink, just because it's permitted, or, or we're getting paid for being able to do it. So I, I would, I, I want to look at this in a real significant way. Interestingly enough, I had this very, we had a very heated conversation about this several years ago. I feel like I'm that old guy, like bringing up old stuff like Kaz Kowalski, I mean, like Mr. Kowalski. But there, there was a council member who was on this council at that time, and, and they were vehement about no open containers in parks, and, because kids are there, and all this stuff. And then we were literally, two weeks after this, this like heated conversation she and I had, or we had, we were at a facility here at, at a sporting event, and, and their, their significant other was sitting next to me and my sons, younger children, and cracked open a beer two seats away from them. And then half of their argument was alcohol next to kids is inappropriate. And so, I think we got to be careful when we pick and choose certain things and certain arguments. They can't be valid here and invalid there. So I, I don't say this is the wrong thing. I'm just saying that we want to look at it clearly and disperse the consequences appropriately, or, or, or don't have it lopsided, like spot zoning, you know what I mean? I know it's maybe apples and oranges, but, you know, you can't do something in one area haphazardly versus another, you know, something in, in a different area for a different reason. So, I just want us to look at this very closely, because there's a legitimate argument that it's inappropriate, what's the term I want to use? Enforcement of, of a concern. So, I don't know. Again, I don't disagree necessarily, but I, I think we should really look at this appropriately. Because again, if I go to Glenwood, if the issue is me drinking in, in the city park, the fact that I pay for it doesn't resolve the issue of me drinking in a city park. So I think it's, you got to be careful how we kind of say those kind of, those things. So, I want to look at this closely. I'm going to be voting no on the first reading. If something could happen to change my mind for the second reading, but for right now, I, I just, as is, I don't, I don't like the way it looks. So, thank you, Mr. President. I know that's a long, long thing, a long way of saying it, but...
Mrs. Arrington.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Mr. Jones. I, I think that we need more discussion on this. I think that we should actually have a study session with the chief. I also think that we need to have a forum with our citizens. I mean, we've been doing this for years, and all of a sudden, now you just want to change the rules? You know, the citizens are a part of what goes on out here, and it's going to affect them too. So, I agree with Mr. Jones. Personally, I think we should table it for more discussion. If we don't table it, I'm going to vote no for the first, first reading also. Thank you.
Did you want to make a motion to table it?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to table it.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to table it?
Was there a second?
Was there a second? Mel seconded it. Sorry. Yeah, we have a motion by Mrs. Arrington, and a second by Mr. Witherspoon.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Arrington to table council file number 15604, and a second by Mr. Witherspoon. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky.
No.
Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. Okay, this motion will adopt six to one. This is tabled.
What just happened is we, when we don't say a yes vote, by council rules, our silence is a yes vote. So, when you hear nobody answer and it's a yes vote, if they say no, it's a no vote. And on this ordinance, we're tabling it, and our secretary would set up a meeting with Mr. Carley and the administration to have a study session with council to vent the views. Is that okay?
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Yes.
We do have a, a meeting with the chief after our next meeting, first, first Wednesday in November. I don't know if it officially needs a study session, or if we want to talk to the chief first, and get his concerns on this and move forward from there. But we are scheduled to meet with the chief of police following our next meeting, November, I believe it's...
First, I think.
Might be right on our calendar here.
November 1st, I believe.
November 1st.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
On November 1st, so maybe we can meet with him and then move forward from there.
Yeah, I think I'd, I want to hear more about it, too. I was blindsided by it, and I know we can't comment on it, so we'll just wait to the meeting and, and talk to the chief.
Mr. President.
Yes.
If we are going to do that with the chief, I would like whoever else we think should be in that conversation as well, at least in the meeting with the chief for that portion of the dialogue.
Yeah.
So we don't have to have separate, so if it's someone from the solicitor's office, or someone else representing the administration, whoever those folks should be, should be in that meeting, at least for that component of the time we're together.
Yeah, I was suggesting, Mr. Carley, only because I thought, you know, he could lend a legal expertise to it.
Whoever would be able to answer the questions, the chief may or may not be able to answer the legalities of the, the questions we have. I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay. Continuing with ordinances for first reading. Council file number 15605, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $60,000 for unappropriated and unanticipated revenue, providing, providing for the expenditure thereof in the capital improvement fund for use of emergency replacement of a roof at Firehouse 13. Sponsored by Mrs. Arrington and seconded by Mr. Brennan, the council file ordinance number 15605, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15605 by yea seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council file 15606, an ordinance amending ordinance number 261958, the traffic code of the city of Erie by the installation of a stop sign at one intersection at Peach Street and West 3rd Street. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the council file ordinance number 15606, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15606 by yea seven, nay zero, That'll take us into new business.
Is there one more?
I read that one.
Stop sign?
I just read that one.
Yes, you did.
You're quick.
Thanks.
She is.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Would you like to move the balance of the agenda?
Moving to separate the balance, we have any separations?
Do we have a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim.
Separation, I'd like to separate number four and number five.
Number four, you said?
Yes, sir. Number four, and number five under new business.
Okay. Four and five under new business. To the students, what we're doing is, we're voting on the block, the business from, to purchase orders, the contracts, everything. If there's any discussion on any item, that's why we're separating it. We'll vote on those separately. Any other separations? Hearing none? Rose?
Hang on a minute. Curtis, you want to?
Yes, ma'am.
Separate out the federal aid reimbursement?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Just for comment, just for comment.
Okay, and the sidewalk maintenance agreement?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. All right, moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Jones, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that the mayor and city controller are hereby authorized and directed to execute the federal aid reimbursement agreement between the city of Erie and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the construction of the Little Italy Neighborhood Sidewalk Reconstruction Project, West Eight Street, West 18th Street from Hubler to Plum Streets. Comment?
Um, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I just, I separated this, again, just for comment, just to recognize the work that Little Italy and all the organizational collaborations, they, they have, they have been a model and kind of exemplifying what, what organizations in the neighborhood can do to rehab and bring resources to that particular neighborhood. I mean, years, I remember years, years, years ago now, some of the Main Street grants and things that they were applying for, that they got, and now they are actually doing some very significant work to make sure that their neighborhood is what they desire for it to be. And so I think, I just wanted to get, kind of highlight, this is another one of those examples of them doing that, and then encourage other neighborhood groups, because we're talking about the comprehensive plan and expanding out, there, there are definitely some recommended areas, excuse my throat, some recommended areas that we're focusing on, downtown and certain identified areas, and some of those spaces in particular neighborhoods are going to get resources faster if they have organized systems for funds and resources to be funneled through. And so just want to, you know, if there are organizations that are out there that are just kind of formulating, or there's groups that aren't formulated, but are, are looking to say, why is Little Italy getting this? Why is our West Bay Front this, or Best getting that? Because they've kind of organized some things in their conduit. Those organizations are conduits for resources. So, just to encourage other groups to, to kind of solidify in that way, whatever it may be, if it's getting the 501(c)(3), if it's getting some of these significant designations or neighborhood designations, to do that, and that's going to help, excuse me, help the, the resources and the improvements that they want to see in their neighborhoods to happen faster, similar to what we're seeing in Little Italy. So, that's all I wanted to say about that, just to kind of highlight that, and then to mark the, the example that they've been for many other groups in the community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
All right, roll call, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Jones, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that the mayor and city controller are hereby authorized to execute a sidewalk maintenance agreement between the city of Erie and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the following, north side of East 12th Street between the East Side connector and East Avenue beginning segment. This is the McVide viaduct. Comment?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
You know, the McVide viaduct is always a big issue, and has been for a long time. And for me, respectfully, in my opinion, I signed the petition years ago to keep it. I think we've come a long way since then in arguments and conversations and process. But for me, the bigger issue is not so much... But for me, the bigger issue is not so much just the bridge itself, the structure, but the safety issues around it. You know, 12th Street, whether we have the bridge in its current condition or improved for pedestrian and bike use alone, and city public park spaces and cool, creative spaces, 12th Street is dangerous. Not just at the connector, 12th Street on 12th and East Avenue is dangerous. It's wide, and I've almost hit people, and I'm pretty, you know, I'm aware that it's dangerous, so I'm very conscious when I'm in that area, but it's just not the safest space. And so, I'm glad to see some of this work being done and some safety improvements, no matter what happens with the bridge, we need to improve the safety of that area for pedestrians of all ages, but especially our students and our kids that are walking in that part of our city. So, it's just, I just want to, again, separate this for comment and say that, you know, it's bigger than, again, our opinions on the bridge and all that process is one thing, but the safety, no matter what, for pedestrians and for drivers. You know, I can't imagine hitting a young person on accident in the mind game and the craziness that that could, you know, provide for somebody, you know? So, it's just good to be able to have safe passage and seeing this investment around such a hot topic, bigger than just the topic, but the safety that's necessary for our kids. So, again, that was just a separation for highlight and comment, because we always talk about what's not going well, but sometimes some of these good things slip under the radar when we vote on the balance. And so, I just wanted to highlight those for some comment. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Witherspoon.
Tote board.
Call for the tote board?
Tote board.
Yes, sir. He's always teaching.
Oh, you want to do this? Uh, hang on a minute. For the sake of the students, we're going to use the board this time.
Here we go.
Is it on?
Yep, yeah. You got to click it. Oh, wait a minute. Out of board. No, no. Wrong button.
He was just showing that we don't always agree. That's all.
Let's try it again. Okay. Got two, one more? There we go.
There we go. Okay, Mrs. Arrington.
I got to learn to keep my glasses on.
Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski.
Mr. President, again, just for the sake of the conversation with the students, the tote board is what we use very seldom, but it's usually for large votes or very significant votes that come before this council, and as we just did this evening, as a teaching tool. So, probably more often as a teaching tool in a lot of ways that we use the tote board. So, just wanted to put that out there as well.
We have, oh, go ahead, Rose.
Well, I just wanted to tell you, we have two wave rules tonight.
Right.
Okay, first wave rules.
To the students, these are things that happen after the agenda was set, and we have agreed to vote on them, so.
Okay, first wave rules, the matter of the Ron Steele Way. So, voting to waive the rules, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. By Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Jones, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that the proper city officials are authorized and directed to designate a portion of West Third Street between Cherry and Publer Streets is Ron Steele Way in posthumous honor of Ronald A. Steele's service and dedication to the city of Erie and G.C.A.T., where he served and mentored for over 30 years, ending his career as chief executive officer. Comment?
Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. It has been a year, this past weekend, that Ron had passed. Ron grew up on West Third Street. He bought a house on West Third. His mother still lived there on West Third. He's well-respected, was well-respected. He worked at G.C.A.T. for many years as CEO. He worked in the county department, probation, as an officer for many years. He retired from there. He's served on numerous boards of directors. He served as the CEO for G.D.I.C., another organization that provides scholarships to kids that's going to school and, in some cases, their parents. I was approached by several people in the neighborhood requesting this, and I thought it was a good idea, and I thanked my colleagues for approving it and letting it go on the way of the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I echo and won't rehearse the resume of Mr. Steele, but he was, his legacy, you know, lives kind of beyond his lifetime here with us. He was very good friends with my father, and they all grew up together as a group of guys in that age group. And again, my father was a part of that. Actually, my father preached his eulogy at his service. And so, Mr. Steele continues his legacy and his hard work and his example for many young black men in this community, but men and people of all ages, genders, and race could follow a positive example of Mr. Steele in going to get his education, working hard, serving in the capacities that he did in our community. So, I'm honored to be a part of this and to agree with moving forward with this recognition of a great Erieite and someone who, again, not just him, his family, the Steele family, his mother's a matriarch in our community. And when I act up, she doesn't mind telling me. She'll get you, no matter where you are. If she sees you, she's got something to say, mother's going to tell you how she feels about it, and that's a beautiful thing to be able to have those great family legacies and family institutions in our community. We don't hear enough about them. So, again, I just wanted to echo those comments of Mr. Witherspoon and add my own to the legacy and acknowledgement of Mr. Steele and his life experiences. Thank you.
And the other member of council? I'd just like to say, I echo the comments and the sentiments. Having met him many years ago, he was a real gentleman and a real asset to the community, and we're all a little bit less for him leaving us, and he's an example of the good that comes out of this town that sometimes never gets acknowledged. But, Rose, take the vote.
All right. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. Second wave rules regarding the right-to-work legislation. Voting to waive the rules, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. By Mr. Kowalski and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that city council hereby declares right-to-work legislation to be unfair, unsafe, and unnecessary and unsafe, and be it further resolved that Erie City Council opposes right-to-work legislation at all levels of government. Comment?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mersky.
I support this resolution. There are no organized labor, and the people of organized labor are under attack through right-to-work legislation, denying them collective bargaining rights, denying them due process, and I think that anything that this body can do to support those efforts goes a long way. So, I support this.
Any other comment? Mrs. Arrington.
I support this, too. I mean, it's long overdue. Anything about public safety is good, especially for our kids, because we still have a lot of kids that walk over to Bayfront and use that pathway to get to school. So, I support this also.
And I'd like to say, as a sponsor, I'm glad to support this as the old man, as Mr. Jones always likes to say. I have watched the fabric of this community change over the years, and I have watched the middle class and the hard union labors disappear from this town. I have watched jobs disappear, and to get into a bidding war with the South over, you know, how they do it, it's not going to happen. So, I'm glad to support this. Any other comments? Call for a question, Rose?
All right, roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Mersky today.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. I attended the redevelopment authority meeting, and in that meeting, they discussed the number of buildings that they have taken down this summer and possible plans for the future pending funding. With that, and that's all in line with the comprehensive plan, they also discussed the property around Union Square, and, you know, no decision was made on anything there, but they're just waiting on Mr. Griffith to decide what he's going to do with that property. And then, also, just to, I wanted to thank the young gentleman from Young Erie Professionals in the Civic Engagement Committee. When I was on Young Erie Professionals when I was young, that was the committee that Representative Bizarro and I co-chaired, and so, it's a very good committee to be on. You meet a lot of people, and we have the same haircut, so. You're already a fan in my book, so. So, I wish you the very best, and if you want to speak after the meeting, I'll be glad to do that. And also, just to let the citizens know, in regards to decriminalizing marijuana and the speaker that came up, we also had a talk in the back, and we're going to be pushing that forward. We're going to talk with the chief and do what we need to do to move that forward. Again, it's not, we say decriminalizing, but what it is, is allowing the option of a non-traffic citation as opposed to a misdemeanor offense. And I think that, as the speaker said, so many cities in Pennsylvania already have it, and in a community where we're bringing people with heroin addiction back to life and not charging them with any crime, but we're charging people with a bag of marijuana with a misdemeanor, it doesn't equate. And so, I think that it's just bringing our laws in line with the way society has changed. You know, there was a time in this country when alcohol was illegal, and my grandma made moonshine, my great-grandma made moonshine. And she was a criminal. She would have been arrested. But things change with the times, and I think that our laws need to change to reflect those changing times. So, that's going to be coming down the pike, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Old Man Mersky. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had several items to report here. Along with many other council members, I attended the P.A. Municipal League Convention event. Couldn't go to all the events, but I tried to attend some of the seminars. There were some good programs that were offered during the event, and I met many officials from throughout Pennsylvania. It was definitely a great event for Erie to bring people in, and I thank every administration who helped put it together, and it was, I'm sure, it was a lot of hard work. Also, we, city council had a study session with representatives from Code Enforcement, Economic Development last week. We request this meeting to discuss the code enforcement issues, some of the complaints, and how these inspections relate to comprehensive plan. The communication and collaboration with council was discussed, and we need to improve it. That was kind of the end result of the meeting, I believe. As a result of working with residents, there was a lot of good ideas discussed to improve the situation, to code enforcement, have them attend the neighborhood watch meetings. They already do that, but maybe do it more frequently, to have door-to-door visits with residents, and they've already started developing a handout, informational handout, to list resources and directories of different places to contact to get advice on home improvement and any other things that could help them. Also, Hannah could talk about inspections, the complaint process, assistance, so forth. At the study session, we also talked about a possible strategy for code enforcement to ensure that there's, owners are properly treated equally, in a predictable path for resolution of code violations, to try to first prevent code violations first, then resolve and only use enforcement tools as fines when absolutely necessary, and to create an efficient, easily manageable database for the code violations. So, definitely we have a lot of work to do, and we'll continue to work on that to improve that. I attended a historic rehabilitation and community revitalization workshop. It was, one of the topics was historic preservation, housing, and jobs. It was sponsored by ACRE, Preservation Erie, and the National Trust for Community Investment Corporation. It was a packed house for the workshop. They had a sell-out crowd. It was a free event, but, you know, it was packed. We discussed the cultural, Erie County Cultural Heritage Plan and the value of preservation to the economy, discussed the details of federal and state historic tax credits. Currently, the city of Erie has eight tax credit projects, which are helping to bring these projects to fruition by helping them financially. Pennsylvania, with its abundance of historic buildings, has been very successful in the past with projects using tax credits. A recent project, not recent, but maybe like 15 years ago, was the corner of 15th and State where Starbucks and Molly Brandon is. They talked about that project a little bit. Also, U.S. Representative for P.A., Mike Kelly, was there to talk about some legislation that he's proposing to bring more resources to historic preservation in a form of tax credit. So, you know, that's good for Erie to hopefully make more products more feasible and be able to move forward to improve Erie and improve our downtown and any other part of the city. And today, I attended the Erie Downtown Partnership Board meeting. At the meeting, the budget for 2018 was presented. Money is budgeted, again, for additional cameras, more funding for facade renovations. Seven events are planned for next year. Events will be, plan to be more family-oriented, and they're also looking toward additional sponsorships. There's no annual meeting this year. They usually have a meeting in November. It's going to be in February or March. And then, at the end of the meeting, we had a great discussion on the future of the organization and how your Downtown Partnership could help to collaborate with other groups and help bring our regional planning efforts together. So, it was a good meeting. That's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only report I have is that I'm pleased to be here. I missed the last meeting. I was in Vegas at the time of the shooting. I was a block away. The sound was like watching a Rambo music movie, and hearing that sound previously, you know what it is. And we had a friend of mine who attended the conference, and two people behind her were shot, and fortunately, she got out of there. And that's going to be a trauma she'll deal with a long time. We were locked down in our rooms at that time for 10 hours. We weren't allowed out of the room. And the first thing I did was pull the shades. You know, most time, you run to the window to see what's happening. Well, from the 16th floor, you couldn't see much, but you can hear it, and it was a long period of time that you listened to those shots. So, it was good to be back home. Thank you, sir.
Good to be back, Will. Mr. Winarsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Apologize for my, I'm a little under the weather this evening. Very brief, Erie Western Pennsylvania Port Authority is developing a master plan. They're going to, they had some preparation for requests for early development of this plan, and come the end of the month here, October, they're going to have that finalized. They will present it both to the board and have a final draft. They're going to get, naturally, have some more public meetings. They had one public meeting, they're going to have another one for public input. Complete information of the plan that they have going on, or the preparation of this plan, is online at the Erie Western Pennsylvania Port Authority website. As Mr. Brennan had mentioned, we did have the study session with code enforcement and economic development. To be honest with you, I thought there would have been a few more citizens here. Although a study session is not crowd involvement as much as up here's discussion between city officials and city council, I just thought there would have, we would have seen a little more out there, which is fine. I do believe we've come a long way since, I know they called that early blitz or whatever, where they went door-to-door, door-to-door. Well, I think they've come a ways where they are coming up with different tools to help the citizens who may have violations, whether there's programs out there that financially can help them correct some violations, or if there's some groups are out there that can possibly correct some of these violations at a very low cost or even free as a community service. So although part of the comprehensive plan, blight is one of the major things to get the plan underway, it's going to take a lot of time, money. This isn't a five-year deal, this isn't even a 10-year deal. This is going to take some time and some hardship, but please, I think on the whole, it's going to make the city better, and with communication that was promised between code enforcement and economic development with council, whether it be on a quarterly basis or even more often, I think it's still in the best interests of the city. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to, a few things I'm going to share in relation to the decriminalization of marijuana. I agree, I'm supportive of the process. Appreciate Mr. Murzky kind of taking the wheels, the steering wheel on that, and definitely supporting that. It's kind of interesting, you know, not too long ago, we passed the opportunity to support medical marijuana-growing facilities and all these things, and then we'll put someone in jail for having a little bit in a bag versus a little bit in a pill. It was kind of interesting, and the one who has it in the bag probably paid for it, the one who's got it in the pill is getting paid for it. So I think it's valuable to have those conversations to see what is appropriate and what is necessary for us to stay up to par with what's going on, and at the same time, keeping, you know, the scruples of our community in place and not allowing crazy things to happen because of that. I guess that'll lead me into, question from the solicitors, because we tabled the topic of the alcohol consumption change. Can I comment on that, because, even though we tabled it?
No, you could.
I can? Okay.
Yeah, you can, not just during the vote.
Just during the vote. Okay, thank you. Just a little clarity. I think, again, we, those are the types of things that we have to really have significant conversation about. I support the premise of making sure that, you know, our community is as business-friendly and community-friendly and child and children-friendly. I absolutely support that I have children. My son, well, they're kind of grown up now, but, you know, I've got 40 nieces and nephews that are still living in Erie, and, yeah, right, exactly, that are still living here, so that means something to me. But with that said, they also walk downtown, and they also go to celebrate Erie, so I just want to make sure that we're going to administer these rules, so to speak, in a fair and even way. And if there are special occasions or issues or circumstances, that that is really clarified to the community, this is why, and this is why not. And I think sometimes it's just a communication. So I just wanted to touch on that, and hopefully, we can get some resolution with the meeting we're going to have with the chief and the administration. Also, in relation to communication, I regrettably could not make the study session the other day. I got called into work, well, actually, got locked into work, couldn't even leave, so I wasn't able to make it. I apologize for that. But my biggest issue was simply that communication and better communication with that department as well as with council, as well as the members in the community. I think everything that was done, I don't think anyone got a site, well, citations is not the right word. No one was given a warning or told they needed to improve something that wasn't in some level of violation, but with that said, there's a way of administering that takes some of the angst and anxiety and supports people who may not be able to do something about it immediately. And so it sounds like that's happening. I'm supportive of that. Again, communication is key for anything and everything that we're doing. I did comment on the young men who were here, kind of in the same conversation around, you know, young professionals in our community, young college graduates, and some young non-college graduates who are professionals as well, entrepreneurial individuals, et cetera. Hopefully, that connection does happen. One thing that I would throw out, and I'll throw in to students as well, is become politically active beyond coming to a meeting. When I first ran for school board director, I was 27, 28. Didn't win, but two years later, I won the city council race, and I've been here ever since I was 29. 28 when I took off, or was I, when I won the primary in the general in November, took office at 29. I'll be 42 at the end of this year, and so I'm coming to the end of my 12 years. So get involved. If you don't want to be elected, because that's a heavy weight to carry at times, be involved with people who are making decisions at this level and lend your support to that from your position in the community. I don't know, maybe there's something you can throw out to your group, having some, you know, a specific liaison connection with city council and some of the decisions we're making in the administration moving into new 18. You're going to be new leadership, there's going to be new administrative leadership, city council leadership as well, so it might be a nice 2018 kickoff to some liaison interaction, and I would be willing to help facilitate that in any way possible as well. The last thing is security and safety in City Hall. This comes up periodically, and sometimes usually it comes up when there's a crisis or something happens. I don't think that anything happened, but sometimes it is kind of nerve-wracking, and this is the most unsafe public place, public building, I think, in all the city, in the whole city, maybe even the county. I know we don't want to make people feel uncomfortable, but people just have total free access to this building, and there's significant things that are happening in here that we're less safe than many public, other public places. So maybe, I don't know what that means, we have, you know, outgoing administration may be willing to have some conversation about that with incoming administration on really making this building a little bit more secure. I know the fifth floor has been secured for some significant reasons, and I think is appropriate, but I think down, you know, there's some kind of mechanisms or some things that can be put in place to make this part of the building, in this entire building, more safe. I think about it with our secretarial staff in our office, you know, if someone could just walk in here, this is like in the cut, like this is out the way, some, something not so safe could happen, and no one would know for the longest time, because people just don't come in this closed-off space with our secretarial staff in the back. And that doesn't mean, not just because they're female, just because they're back there and isolated. And so those are things that I want to maybe look at in the, going into the rest of this year and into the future with new leadership and expanded leadership in our community. That's all that I have, Mr. President.
Mrs. Arrington?
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I want to thank everybody for hanging around and listening to our comments. Thank you very much, it's really appreciated.
Thank you.
I'm going to give you all a round of applause. And I know this is a long meeting, but we can't say anything to the end, so it's exciting to see all of you. Mostly, everybody's still here, so thanks again. And I want to go back and talk a little bit about the Paris Square thing with the alcoholic beverages and why I made a motion to table it. I'm all for public safety, and, but my thing is, whatever you do up there on State Street, you got to do the same thing down here. And I'm all for change, we definitely need change in our community, but down here at City Hall, we need to be transparent, okay? The study session is one thing, but even beyond the study session, after we're done meeting with the chief, I think we should have a forum for our citizens, because the change that they're trying to make down there is going to affect all of you too. And everybody don't have a TV, a computer ready, or they may not listen to it, so everybody don't know what's going on, you know? So I think it's our priority to have a forum, to let as many people know as we can what's going on, and then hear what you have to say, you know, because you elected all of us to be up here and be your voice, you know? And another thing that I want to say, you know, I think we should give a hand to our city council, because we're doing a lot of good stuff up here, you know, especially for the Erie community. It's a lot of stuff going on, and, you know, we don't always agree with each other, but we learn to agree to disagree, you know? And like I said, by tableing this, you know, I need to learn more about what they're talking about. I'm all for the safety of children and all that too, but this change is going to affect everybody. So we need to have as many people to the table, we need to be more transparent, but not just this ordinance, but whatever goes on in our city, whatever changes need to be made, and we need our citizens like you to be a part of this. You are a part of the change. The change is not only going to affect us and our families, but it's going to affect you too. And again, I would like to say very much thank you for hanging around and listening to us. Have a blessed night.
Okay. Excuse me, had a cold this week. I want to thank the administration for the handling of the League of Cities. Had nothing but positive comments the whole week. I think they saw the, one of the best sides of our community. Were all a little worried as to the late, lateness of the year, but even with some of our best assets closed up, I think they still had a good time, and I, you know, I think we showed them that it doesn't snow in Erie in October.
Not always.
As Curtis and I worry about, because we were hearing that.
Still in October, right?
But I think, you know, we did, I think we did a great job, and I think that bodes well for future endeavors from out east and other places. I attended the zoning board. I couldn't stay long because it was a long process, but I understand there's some problems there with ARNAV and other new industries that are coming into the world. That's probably some council's going to have to look at, like other communities, how that affects our zoning, how it affects our neighborhoods is very important. Decriminalizing marijuana. I'm glad that Councilman Murzky brought that up. As a young man who, many years ago, that's the great thing about being a young man, many years ago, you saw the Great War on Drugs, as they called it, where young people really suffered from what I call making mistakes, as young people do, their whole careers were shot.
Yeah, that's true.
Over, you know, what today we would look at as really a minor infraction, yet I served with many of those people in the military. They were good enough there to catch a bullet, but not good enough to have their record expunged, and that was bad. I mean, we're talking about, kids always make mistakes, we all did. Some of us didn't get caught, some of us did. That's what life is all about, but, you know, we got to forgive, and I think we're seeing that with some of the incentives with people that are incarcerated coming back. Until you talk to someone that's affected by it, you don't realize what it does, you know, how tough it is for people to straighten out their lives, to not be able to be a teacher, not be able to be a lawyer, to not be able to live their dream because of something they did when they were a young person. Parking on the sidewalks. There seems to be great, as Mr. McDonald pointed out, that to me is one of the, that's the other side of blight, and it seems to be very prevalent on East 38th Street, Pine Avenue, now along Parade Street, we have businesses parking their cars out there. There seems to be great confusion, and I, I'm going to have to talk to the administration to find out actually who's in charge of enforcing it, because every time you ask somebody, it changes from day to day. But it's starting to get to where I'm getting calls from Voices of Independence, and I'm getting calls from citizens, just like Mr. McDonald, that want to be able to walk the sidewalks. And we can't have people parking on sidewalks. I don't know where that started, but, you know, here we are considering planting vegetation on people's front lawns, and we're allowing them to park their cars there on the sidewalks. Something's got to be stopped. To Mr. Witherspoon's comments about Vegas, and to Mr. Jones's comments about the security in the building, it was interesting to note that, that, I won't call him a gentleman, the man that shot those people in Vegas possessed more firepower and possessed a larger clip than the average infantryman does in the Army. The average weapon doesn't even have automatic fire anymore, yet, you know, here's a guy with a 60-round clip and an automatic firing, however you want to put it. I'm not getting into Second Amendment arguments, but somebody has to look at that. And as for the building, we were almost there, Mr. Jones. In 2001, we had a plan on the, on the books, but between the administration, the unions, and everybody else, it didn't work out, but I'm amazed that when I used to come here as a controller, and I would go upstairs to my office, do a little work, and come down here, it was amazing how, on the night of a council meeting, the gate is open, the elevators are open, the janitorial staff has got all the suites open, and, you know, anything could happen. So I think somewhere, we're going to have to look at the security of building. I know it's going to be an inconvenience for citizens, but for the safety of our employees and people who do business here, we're probably going to need to look at that. As for the alcohol ordinance, I think on the surface, it's very good, but I think the perception of a lot of people out in the public is that the downtown has turned into what some call drunk fest, you know, where we openly endorse some events, but not others. There needs to be a balance, and I've watched how other communities will either move the events somewhere that's less out in the open, you know, where ours is right out there. So if we're going to start banning, I agree with Mrs. Arrington, we need to look at, and as Mr. Murzky brought up, we need to see the effect on all public parks and all neighborhoods, and look at it from, you know, how are we going to interpret it so we do it consistently, and we're not just answering to the dog that barks the loudest, you know? So that's my concerns, and I, I was kind of stunned when I found out about this. I was at Channel 24 when I first was approached by one of the reporters, and I didn't know how to answer it, because I wasn't aware of it. So I hope the speed of this ordinance also gets done with some of the ordinances we have sent up and are still waiting for us since January. And finally, to the young people, I want to commend you for your attendance here. I would add one thing. If one thing disappointed me over the years, I'm glad you're here, and I hope you're all registered to vote, but I do hope that unlike what I see when I'm out there, that you do vote, because so many people in my generation, I hate to go back, but they fought for the right for 18-year-olds to vote, and they could not determine the man that sent them overseas or to war. And too many young people today do not take advantage of the right to vote. If you go to Europe, when we were in Poland, you'll watch the people crawling in the rain under crutches and their wheelchairs, and here in America, we can't even get you to come out two blocks to vote. So tell your friends, it's very important, because you do have a say, and it's not about electing the president, it's about electing all the other offices that are just as important, and probably more so than the mayor or the governor or the president. So that's my two cents. The controller left to Jill for the administration?
Just very briefly, the ordinance that was tabled tonight does include all parks and playgrounds throughout the city area, so it's not specific to the downtown area. It's a quality of life issue, and we want people and families to feel safe everywhere that they go. So thank you, and there'll be certainly more.